All right, welcome everybody. It's now six thirty one, select board meeting, July tenth. Open as we usually do with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave Hemmle.
Marlo Herrick.
The normal way.
And so that moves us on to our announcements.
How many folds is Dana?
Do we have any particular announcements?
I really do not.
All right, you should probably, chicken barbecue announcement?
Chicken barbecue, the twenty second.
And if you want tickets, of course, they'll be able to sell them at the fire station during their meetings on Wednesday night.
Ian Ross, Ian Dana have some here. I replenished them on Friday.
Are there also some at the clerk's office for the night hours? Or only would...
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I just, yeah.
So come in during the day and pick them up from these guys.
That wouldn't be a bad idea. Registration people.
Not like they're not going to sell out soon anyway. They always do.
Yeah. Hey, it's always good to be on top of things.
So.
That's right.
Is there anything that you want to put forth for a safety type announcement with the weather, et cetera?
No, I'm sick of the rain. We need to get some hay cuts so cows can, horses can eat this winter. But Mother Nature, it's all her fault. Her.
Yeah.
Oh, I would...
Just kidding.
No, 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 I'm just getting out of line. I, no, no, I'm, everybody's been great. The roads are in, I mean...
We're fortunate right now.
Things could, things could change in the blink of an eye, but so far, so good. My hat's off to everybody else that's got quite a challenge and ahead of them through the state, but.
All right. Any other announcements?
Nope.
Okay. So that moves us on to our first appointment, which is department heads. So we have one, come on down.
Steve's not coming? I thought he told me he was coming tonight, but he is not making it.
Steve had...
Yeah, oh, I know, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no.
And I told him, you're not going to come on Monday night.
Okay.
He told me, oh, yes.
Oh, he's okay.
You see Dana was right. But he did have his report, his normal report.
Yeah.
Oh, I remember now, okay.
So, yeah, yeah.
He's got a good reason to not be here.
Yeah.
But you always think you're going to spring and spring right back in place.
Well, I think it was a little bit more complicated than they planned on, but he's going to be, everything's good.
Good.
It's gotta be, he was sending me pictures of deer on his front lawn this morning, so.
Oh, wow.
I had one, I was looking at my, over my garden fence to see how the guard was doing. I'm looking, there's a deer looking right at me at the other side of the fence. It's not more than from here to the chairs. And he just sat there looking at me.
You know, when I went across the Dustin Road today on Hocken side, there was a deer that was laid just on the other side of the ditch and one standing there. And I mean, from the shoulder of the road, they were no further from the travel lane to where you're sitting.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, one laid right there, just as happy and comfortable. So moving right along. The firehouse is flowing along real well. Two Friday nights ago, we spent the night in Dun Barton. We covered their station from eight thirty to one. And then at one o'clock, they called us up to the scene. We worked up there for an hour or better. And then I think we got home around three o'clock. So that was that. And then Friday, that was Friday. So Monday, I'm screwed up because of the holiday. But then Monday morning, I was at the police station with Steve going over some things. And we got toned out for a garage fire on the Roby Road. Steve got on the scene and the first officer from Warner had a fully involved garage, two, two car garage, a two-story garage. So I waited for a crew with engine two and took them over and laid a line in three hundred feet in from the road. The building was already starting to collapse. That gunned the end of the trailer twenty feet from the structure and saved, straight, saved the structure that the folks lived in.
Wow.
So Warner came over to help us and Ian Salisbury, the Concord people. So, Hocken. So, yeah, so that was that. And then handful of medical calls. So a hundred and four or five calls for the year. They, they asked if they could take the fire truck to Andover for the parade on the fourth. And I said, yeah, great, that'd be great. So Wednesday night at eight o'clock, the phone rang and said, hey, Emmett, the truck's making an awful noise.
No.
So I put my boots back on and went down to the fire station and started the truck up and shut it right back off. And come to find out, the air conditioner pump had seized up. So the belt was slipping, so that's the truck that we took to the call. And we backed it all back in, went over it, everything was fine, but something went to heck with that. So took the serpentine belt off, got that all loosened up and a bunch of the wires and got the belt off in it and fixed it. The serpent, there's two serpentine belts on that one to run the the alternator and the water pump. So, and then the second one just ran the compressor for the air conditioner. So the truck is still in service. But the, we're living without an air conditioner, not that we use it that much anyway. So I have to get that fixed. So luckily, luckily, if the folks weren't going to take it to the parade and we've got in it to go to another emergency, might have screwed something, you know, then, so the belt burnt off and or whatever, but that all worked good.
Flying belts are fun.
Huh?
Flying belts do some fun damage.
Yeah. So, and a lot of times they'll get in underneath the other belt and knock them off and cause a lot of trouble. So it was great, actually, that they did go down to clean the truck and get it ready for the parade to find, find that. So other than that.
We had something down at the Hocken parade too, right?
Yeah, yeah. Jake took the tanker down. Then Eric Perry and his family took the engine to Andover. And I was here in case state in town, so. Yeah, I think, I think that's about pretty much covers the firehouse part of it. Then other than the rain, tugging around with the ditches and keeping, making sure the brush doesn't get in front of the pipes, every, check them. And we've done a little work down on Pleasant Street, changed a couple of pipes and got that ditched out. Because who knows, they're so far behind on their tiring and their grinding, so.
Right, because this doesn't help.
Oh, no, no, everybody's behind the eight ball. So other than that, puttering down there a couple of days last week, three, four days or something in the rain. It's not much been going on.
Good, no way.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's frustrating when you have a plan and want to try to do something. Do you try to do it or don't you try to do it?
Well, the other day, the other day, we changed that pipe right at the beginning of Ronnie Frost Field on the right. There was an eighteen-inch pipe that was going across there. And I've got pictures, the whole bottom of it's just, it's twenty, well, it must be thirty something. Addie said Danny Stevens was the last one that did anything to that road. And that must have been thirty-five years ago.
Yeah, a long time, right.
And so the pipes are all rotted out. So we changed that with the, we took an eighteen out, we put another eighteen in. Just got it all back into shape, built the headers on each side. Got it gravelled back in in, must have been like one o'clock. And the skies lit up. And within fifteen minutes, that pipe was three-quarters full.
Oh, my God.
The water just came down over that hill out of that whole length in. I mean, it was, it would have been, it would have caused a lot more. We were just...
Right on time.
Right, yeah.
But wasn't it fun to see how well it worked?
It worked.
Look at that, boys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, other than, other than working down on Pleasant Street.
Well, it's been a little hard to be working in the rain too, all this rain.
Correct, correct.
Because I could see your hay, that's going to be a real problem once the rain. I thought of that.
So thinking of the kind of longer-term project stuff while we've got all of the rain and whatnot, where are we with the use of the sand? And I believe you needed to clear some trees from on top of it to keep going.
Yeah.
And the driveway and clearing path for the sand shed and the utility cart for the fire station.
Yeah, no, there are projects that are going to happen before fall. I just want to get my road projects done first because of the school, school buses.
Right.
And that, that needs to be done, but that's my priority, is getting Pleasant Street up and going.
All right.
All right, so I guess since he's...
The driveway, Dee and the driveway permits all been taken care of at the safety building.
Yeah, with school. And then, yeah, the guy's kind of gone all by and giving them out lately.
Yeah.
I don't know, well, right here, well, one-twenty-seven got his, meaning, oh.
Oh, we're right across the street, basically.
Yeah, right across the street from you.
Yeah.
That one, Jock got that through.
But that entrance, that entrance, the new entrance is going to be, to do what the states pact. It's going to be seventy-five feet wide.
Wow.
To get, to get that. And I, and I kind of, and the guy from the state said, well. So I pretty, I just shut my mouth and listened. And that's what you want, that's what you get, so.
Okay. Is it marked? Because I think I was walking up there.
Oh, yeah, he marked it all out, Steve, Steve, and I had it marked out.
Yeah.
Thirty feet wide. I mean, it won't be that wide going up into the new, but the entrance.
What, what, never mind. Who knows why? I'm not going to waste time.
Yeah.
State, I just noticed that was my wrong.
Right, and it's what they said, and that's what they asked for.
It's probably some state reg based on the longest fire apparatus in the state.
Maybe, yeah, yeah, or the country.
Well, and it's like I did, I said, well, Jesus, that's going to be bigger than Tyler Road. You know, I said, that's going to be whatever. And then the guy, he did, when he called back to say the permit was all signed and everything, he says, I went down and measured Tyler Road and you're wrong. He said, it's not that. I said, okay, okay. Thank you, have a good day.
Oh, my God, he's out of boy energy.
Oh, because I thought it, you know, but hey, if that's what it takes.
Right, you're not going to fight city hall.
No, no, and if you do.
That's why I started to ask the question and shut my mouth.
Yeah. Well, I'm learning.
It's hard. The why wants to just come, it's just like, you're just like when you're little, why?
Right.
It doesn't stop until you get older because you want to understand what people are thinking.
That's true.
So we marked it all out. And he's all good with everything. Two-foot pipe, was an eighteen on the permit. And then he said, after I got back and thinking about it, he said, I would really? I said, whatever you want, yes, dear, whatever you want.
Interesting.
Anything else for...
Glad everything's under control, that's good.
Yeah.
You're doing a good job, no problem.
Dinner bells ringing.
Yeah.
All right, awesome, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's good.
We'll keep our fingers crossed we don't get some of these...
Yeah, me too.
Watching some of this stuff on social media, it's like, oh, Prospect Hill and Sonnapi's just looks like a mud river.
Yeah, and it's making a mess. I mean, it's putting gra, it's putting, it's making a mess, but hey.
So far, so good, you got to ditch roads and here we go.
For the moment, things are good, no promises.
It's got to be sunny, it's got to come out sometime.
It's got to. It's got to.
Sienna, take care.
Thank you. Before I have Dana talk briefly about some of the budgeting stuff with that department, I'll summarize the police department one, which was, they've used, sorry, they are left with fifty-four point five percent of their budget. There were twenty vehicle stops and one summon and one fine, but no arrests. For the other one, if I can find it, it just came earlier. Probably could have included it as news, but, oh, wait, it was on the website. On our website, on, which will be with health. Oh, we're talking about the, the test results came back from Blackwater River with the E. coli stuff at various locations. So right below the dam was ten, right below, right at Close Pim Bridge was twenty and seventy-four. And the gauge station further down was at ten. And so that's a colonies per amount. And to put those numbers within standing, a designated swimming beach standard class A top is eighty-eight, what we have to match for the class B standards of the river for like fishing and stuff being safety is four oh six, and we're well below both of them. So that is good news for our river and water quality. And so then, I will yield to Dana to tell us how we're doing financially.
Well, we certainly have come a little way since I was putting my tail of woe.
And of course, we, all of the taxes were already due by now. So if you somehow didn't notice or get a tax bill or pay one, you should definitely get with the, with the tax collector at this point.
And I have that someplace. Be it with me?
Send folder number three.
You know, it's Sunday.
That's what you say, hey, Marlo, really?
You win the right door, you win a prize.
Right, yeah.
Well, I kind of know what it says. Oh, yeah, here it is, my very last thing I looked for.
Of course, that's always the way.
As of, after we paid all the bills this past week, we had a balance in the bank of a million seven hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars. On the go forward, we still have approximately three hundred thousand dollars in taxes that haven't been paid for the latest issue and ninety-something thousand on previous years. We have school payments. I just did a little rough estimate to see how we're going to go through the year. And again, again, it's always when you're forecasting. And I like this, I like doing this, and I'm kind of going to do a different method so I can do it monthly rather than once in a while. But you never know, sometimes you do your best guess on what you're going to have for, for income and for what's going to go out. But the school payments, which are fixed, which are three hundred eight thousand five sixty-two a month. So I have put in August, September, October, November, thinking that we're going to have taxes coming in, starting in December. Payrolls, that's ten payrolls in that period, that's about a hundred seventy-five thousand. Taxes, ninety-six hundred. Retirement, seventeen thousand. Averaging vendor payments of a million twenty-three thousand five thirteen. Hoping, we have anticipated deposits of eight hundred thousand. It doesn't leave us much wiggle, leaves us about seventy-seven thousand dollars. I hope that's the worst-case scenario. And I tried to make it the worst-case scenario rather than to, to estimate light. We have, as you know, the town voted to transfer money to the trust funds and the expendable trust funds. We really, I don't feel can do that until the next issue of taxes, unless we have an unforeseen windfall. Because that is...
Oh, the unforeseen.
Don't we need to do some of that transfer in order to cover our work?
Here, yeah, and so this, we're going to this. But right you are. We have, in the highways and roads, the budget for the proposed addition was two hundred seventy-five thousand. And we have been eroding that balances. Emmett's done quite a bit of work. We have twenty-three thousand dollars left in that fund. So we're going to have to do something soon. And I think we can, because I think I've overestimated our expenses.
Better to be over than under. I'm with you on that.
Well, I just, I don't want to have to come back to you and say, you know what? We didn't, we didn't have what we thought. So if we were to finance, we really can't do any more than that, two seventy-five. I wouldn't dare do any more than that now. But probably, maybe in the next month or so, we should fund that.
How much of that two seven, like, we don't have to do it all at once either.
You don't, no.
So how much of that two seventy-five are we expecting reasonably quickly and/or once the paving is done?
How much are we expecting to expand?
Yeah.
You know, that's an excellent question, but I'm going to say seventy-five thousand. Thereabouts. Emmett's done quite a lot of work, that we've been taking money out for Pleasant Street. And I know he's finishing up on Pleasant Street, so. And he's, his other projects, he hasn't really, I should need to talk to him a little more, but I think seventy-five thousand for now will be fine.
And so the total we were putting into that was how much?
Two seventy-five.
Okay, so that leaves two hundred for after the taxes or when they do more with paving?
Right.
That sounds pretty reasonable.
I mean, the town voted five seventy-eight thousand for capital reserve funds and a hundred thirty-three for the expendable trust funds. And we've always, the town's always been fortunate because they've not had to borrow money. And I'm trying to keep it that way.
Yep.
One thing I will say, and Russ and I are very much aware of this, is that the revale can't hold us up at the tax rate. We've got to have that revale. And I have spoken with the assessors about that. And will be speaking all summer with assessors about that because it's, we, we will have, it's imperative.
Can I ask you something? What do we, do you, I mean, offhand, probably don't know, what do we get from the government for the dam and the property all behind the dam? Don't we get paid for that?
Yep.
I knew, I thought we did.
We do.
It's not a lot, is it?
It isn't, I mean, isn't, I don't know if I dare say, there's, there's two moms that come, and I'm a little confused, but I thought it was, one was thirty thousand or something.
One is thirty thousand, I don't know the other ones.
Yeah.
That little?
So let's see.
Can somebody revale that?
Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
The flood control reimbursement stuff is approximately thirty-three, thirty-four thousand. We also get some reimbursement because of the land from back there, it looks like, which is maybe two, twenty, three hundred bucks or something.
Yeah, it's not much.
It's tiny. So that's really where, where most of that comes from. The, what we typically do really good with, and especially as more people have newer vehicles coming, is our motor vehicle permitting. Unfortunately, we lost a bunch of that at the beginning of the year. Like, we still got some of it, but some of that will have gone to Warner because they were doing it instead of our, our.
Well, you can't help that. So this is not a normal year then, it's not going to end up as a normal year.
So our revenue is going to be off of that.
Little bit, yeah.
Which is unfortunate. The, the plus side is that we wouldn't have had, we're getting most of it, but some of that will have gone to fees towards, towards their doing it.
Yeah, right, that makes sense.
But the plus side was, since we didn't have a clerk, we weren't paying for a clerk, the full clerk at the same time either, so overall, that's, that's what that is.
And before we get past the dam, the police still gets paid for doing work behind the dam too. So we get money from that, okay?
Well, that does not go into the general fund.
Okay, but, okay, so it's just a police?
It goes into the police revolving fund.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
Hopefully, they need less money.
And they have purchased, I mean, they paid for all their radios for the latest cruiser out of that.
Good.
And that certainly helped a lot.
The, I guess this is a good time, just not that most people will watch, but part of the reasoning for making sure that this is out front and forward is we wouldn't have had these slim margins and really worries about our output if we hadn't been putting so much money back towards the taxes to reduce the taxes artificially the last few years because of the pandemic. So that shrunk our overall unassigned fund amounts down to the minimums that we were supposed to have it. And we're seeing now exactly why those are the minimums. And so that conversation is one that, when the time comes at the end of the year, you'll probably not be seeing us doing that to hide or artificially decrease any tax rates in order to get that healthier. So we're not in this spot next year.
Right.
Though it's also worth noting that we kind of got hit with worst case where the school payments went up significantly because of the school's budgeting. And...
Which we don't really know how to buy that.
Even though we're not taking more in for the first half of the year until December, we have to pay them, even though they went up and we can't collect it till the end of the year. So that really hurts us as well. But if anyone's wondering, that's why.
But fortunately, I mean, the good news is we're up to date on everything. And, you know, while it sounds like we have plenty in our general fund, we know it. Every dollar has a job, as one of my professors used to say.
It's also good not to, yeah, it's also good, there's, there's a fine line of being real comfy and fat.
Right.
And working as, you know, making people pay for things that, in a sense.
So, I mean, I think, and again, I think two things that I tend to do. I tend to overestimate our expenses just to keep, so I'm always pleasantly surprised. It's almost like Christmas again.
Right.
And I do the same thing with revenues when I estimate.
It's like when you take a test and you think, oh, I did terrible. And you get an A.
One of my first jobs, my boss would, I was not the town administrator, but he would inflate the revenues. And everyone would be, isn't this great? Well, becomes the point of reminiscing that.
Yeah, that's, no, I wouldn't want to do that, that's not, I wouldn't like to do that.
So I hope of giving you some information.
Thank you.
But as I say, I think, I think once a month, it's good to kind of chat about it, to keep the subject in front of us, because frankly, we've not really had to worry too much about it, so it kind of...
Now, we've spent all our ARPA funds, right?
No, we have.
Still have more of that, okay.
That's, that's enough. That's, that's another pile.
Well, we should get a pile.
We have, we have not spent the ARPA funds, we have about forty-six thousand dollars left.
Oh, good.
However, we have several items that have not been completed yet. And they are, we've got thirty-four hundred in the record retention project that we haven't expanded. The seal code at the public safety building for eighty-nine ninety-five. The sign at the public safety building, it came in less than what, the twenty-two eighty-two? By twenty-two eighty-two, sorry. However, I think they're gonna use that when they get the electricity going. The door project still has sixteen thousand in it, we're waiting for our follow-up, so I don't think it's, we know it's not gonna be that much. The coal trailer, twelve thousand, and we have an unspecified amount of twenty-five hundred ninety-two.
Awesome.
So.
It's, it's too bad we couldn't get that new sign, we're talking about the new sign that tells every, what's, too bad we couldn't get that on solar or something, so the solar would pay for it.
You know, Dave, that is an excellent suggestion.
I wonder how, I wonder.
Although, right now, the sign would be like, wow.
But it can, but in a nice day.
Power.
That's right.
Which, you bring up the solar, so I'd like to talk about that.
Certainly.
For, since we're, we're there. I've been trying to learn about the solar array, and Dave has been very patient coaching me with it. We have the money that you voted on a few weeks ago to fix the inverters, to bring those up.
The modems for the inverters.
Modems for the inverters. Which, it's great, now they're up to five G, however, what I thought they were gonna fix was the record that you could see online. And there's a meter that is bad that needs to be fixed, or something's not reporting the use back to Knollwood. So we're not getting the recs.
Okay. Has, has, have they given you any information for the, the the logins for the portal that they have with the inverters?
They have not.
Okay. So, I guess, I guess I'll do the, the, the other kinda quick summary there. The, we've got four sets of solar arrays, of solar rows. Each row has one inverter on it that turns solar power into AC standard power that we, that we use. Those south two and the north two are each considered one array, and that's how it's reported and also how it's stuck on the meters. The inverters have modems on them reporting to a solar edge cloud-based system for monitoring and, and taking care of the solar system, et cetera. Where they can look at all of the details down to, this is what this particular panel is doing. Obviously, the solar company wasn't doing that, but they can, and that's what that's capable of and what we're waiting to have access to. That's what they quoted us for, for replacing when we said, hey, we're not seeing any of our metering, any of our data showing in the online portal.
Even though, when we made the purchase.
And we gave them the link to it, saying this is what we want.
That was part of the deal.
Yes.
Right?
And they were supposed to look at, you know, other things and do the, once this is there, we're sending a technician, he's gonna go in detail and make sure everything's working correctly. We haven't gotten any reports on any of that.
So.
But the, so, so that's the inverter section. Each array, when it comes out, comes to the meters that are, what are on the, on the road, on the woodboard. And, before it goes to the unitil meters, there's a meter next to it, which is a solar log meter. Those meters are our revenue-grade meters that are what we're giving us, our nice graph on the website. And, those are also what are used to report our renew, for our renewable energy credits. Those are, we're also three G and not reporting. And so, that's what we were thinking was being fixed, because, oh, they're, they've got those there, but they're reporting through the inverters and, or whatever, but the the solar company didn't, didn't understand when we said, this is what we want. Like, this is the thing that we see on our website, and they thought it was a different thing, I, I'm giving the benefit of the doubt that they thought it was something else.
I agree, very, very, very.
But, in any case. So, we still don't have reporting of our renewable energy credits. That does not affect our metering with unitil, because they just use their own meters that are right there with them. But these are for the renewable energy credits.
And we've never had them, since we put that in, even though it was part of the deal.
No, they, those have been reporting until three G went down. Like, February of twenty-twenty-two. So, those meters are still fine, they're still good, they just don't talk three G, three G anymore. And, they could get upgraded to five G. Typically, solar log will have some sort of contract and should have reached out to us, but we never heard anything. Probably the contact person was somebody over at the solar company, and they're probably not there anymore, and so on. So, that never happened. I've talked with the gentleman that does the reporting of the renewable energy credits for myself, and Marty and others on the Energy Committee that, that do all of our individual stuff, to see if he is able to do that for the town as well. And he says that that is possible, that he just charges the same rates based on the size of the, the arrays and stuff. And, in, in looking at all of that, he can't, if we were to do that instead of going with whatever solar log has, he can't just immediately say, well, I'm registering for everything back then. But because we've already been registered through the process, and we have a reported last number, he can eventually get that reconciled to what the current number is for that rec reporting. Obviously, prices can change, et cetera, but it's pretty low. The way his, our, his rate structure is set up, it would be about fifty dollars a year for him to do the reporting.
But we have to upgrade our machinery first.
No.
No.
So this is, this is the key. If we go through solar log, which is what I believe you've got a new quote for, that I haven't seen yet. But if we go through solar log, that is the solar company upgrading those modems, and then going with solar log, which I believe was, according to the solar company, a five-year contract sort of thing, and five years' worth of the cell modem service. So after the five years, there would be some sort of payment again to somebody, however much, don't know. Let's see. So this quote is for twelve fifty, including the new meters, sorry, the new, either a new meter or a new cell plan, a cellphone add-on to these meters, and the five-year cell plan. As I stated, these meters are perfectly fine, they just don't know how to communicate anymore. And the reason that I reached out to the gentleman that I use is as long as I've got a certified meter, which what we have is, I can just read the number and give it to him, and he can use that and do the whole thing. So what it would mean is that once a month, and I've showed Dana where this is, but once a month.
Somebody goes over and reads the number.
He would read the two numbers and send them to this guy, and that would be the sum total plus the, like, fifty dollars a year or so, instead of this twelve fifty. If you're doing it over five years, fifty, let's say as prices go up, but like, it's two fifty, we'll say three hundred bucks for the five years versus twelve fifty. The benefit of this is no one has to do it, no one has to think about it, but it's a thousand dollars difference over the, over the five years, and it's not paying all of it now.
Well, it gets them out of the office.
I have been going over to read the meters, because when, when, when the sun was out, I thought it was a great deal of fun, because I would see how much it produced. Because I'm still, I'm still getting used to this unitil thing and how that's all working out. I didn't go over today, because it was pouring rain.
It is funny, all of, there's all of these little loose ends. And you sit here and you kinda wonder, okay, I mean, granted, are we, are we five years or not?
It would have to be, yeah.
No, no, is that one of, put in about five years ago?
Yes, roughly.
Yeah. You just wonder sometimes, like, okay, who forgot to share that? But I think you're on top of it, and you, and at the end of the day, I mean, you don't have a problem going over and reading it.
Oh, absolutely not.
So I say we just keep it like you've got it happening, and thank God you have the knowledge you have. And I was trying not to, I was trying to follow you, but there might have been a few yawns in between that, no, just get it.
And that's one of the things where, like, it's great that I have the knowledge, but, I can't, I can't in good conscience make the town dependent on me. And so that's why, like,
True.
I wouldn't say, well, I'm gonna go do it and, you know, I'll, we'll just pay this guy and I'll take care of it, but it's, go read a number and report it, and so.
No, that's, I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm with you, yeah, you gotta be careful, you don't say, oh, I can do this, do this, that.
I think if we have a procedure, it will work fine.
Yeah.
You know, just as long as we know, and, you know.
Emails out saying, hey, click here, you need to do this, it's the first, you know, first of the month, do it within a week or so, and you're fine.
With the solar things, I mean, it's nothing I ever had anything to do with, so it's like all Greek to me, but I'm starting to.
Well, understand it, but also, I think, you say what you want, they're still figuring out all their stuff. To some degree, me, meaning like even what we're dealing with unitil and with them, you know, not, yeah, there's a little bit of.
I will refrain from saying anything about unitil.
Does that ever stop you? Anyways, we can move on.
So I just wanted to chat with that, since you were on the solar type thing.
I, I will say that there are several open dockets for both the PUC and the Department of Energy regarding unitil liberty and ever-source, and how they are currently acting towards suppliers, distributed energy, alternative energy, and people like the Coalition, which I am part of, as a board member now. So, and we've announced that before, but, just to make sure that I'm not into.
But definitely, I know what you're saying.
Which, yeah, and, and of course, the town is part of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire as well. And I don't have them sitting right in front of me, I actually meant to mention it as part of our announcements, but when they announce the rates again for the next upcoming set, and even though the utilities surprised us with actually lowering it significantly, the, or I should say, by us, I mean, you know, the general public, the community power is still, again, fifteen percent lower than all of the utilities, so it's, it's really good. And we're continuing on the path.
It's not all set up yet, though.
No, so we're, we're not doing that in town yet.
Okay.
We are on an accelerated path now, that we, depending on responses to other things through PUC, Department of Energy, and, and others, there's a small chance that we might be able to launch towards the end of fall to capture the, the savings for everybody in town for the winter period when it goes back up, like everybody would expect it to in winter. That, there's a small possibility there, if not, it would probably be a spring launch, much like everybody else, much like the first people did this year. So we're still a ways out before anyone in town gets community power, or Webster community power, but.
But it looks, at least it's moving forward, as slow as it is, it's moving forward, and eventually, hopefully, help everybody in town with their power.
Yep.
And the cost.
Yeah, that is exactly what it's designed to do, and so far, it's doing that job really well for the people that have been able to get it so far. And should for us as well going forward. All right. Did we, did anyone have any other questions on the, the solar stuff? Do we, what do we need to do to decide on this versus that option, or? Because it's not really like a quote, it's a, we would sign up with.
Right, I, I guess I was just looking for which option you were going to go with. And I don't ne, I don't think it necessarily needs a motion. Just tell me which one, which I think I know. Which way that you'd like to go, and if we go with, with the company that you use, or the gen, the consultant that you use, I would appreciate you kinda sat with me for five minutes to tell me what my next step is.
I'll put it here so you can see, we have basically twenty-six kilowatts, so we're in this ten to twenty-nine range, which means twenty-five dollars in annual fee per array, so it'd be that total of fifty that I mentioned. This is the chart for what he charges and how that works. And the, it's once a year based on when you sign, not like, once on January, plus whatever.
On your birthday.
So.
Whenever you choose your birthday to be, Dave.
So that would be whenever we finish getting signed up. And it is Paul Button, who is Energy Audits Unlimited, which, and he deals with solar recs all throughout New Hampshire and, and other places as well, but most of us around here use him, because the prices are really good and it works. We would have to contact Knollwood and ask him to, ask Knollwood to update it to him being the reporter, and there's a couple steps in there. So it's not like it'll be done tomorrow kinda thing, but, did Knollwood ever get back to us? What did they say?
Yeah, well, they told me that the last time we got recs was, like you said, February of last year, twenty-two. And they hadn't gotten any reporting, basically, is what.
And did they say it was solar log that was the com, the reporting agency?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So to get the recs, we need to get them the reporting.
Right. But they responded very quickly, and I think they're responsive. There's more than I can say.
Yeah, Knollwood is pretty good about that sort of thing, they're large all throughout New England, and they do this everywhere in all the different states, and they it's misrepresentative to say this, but the easiest way to think of it is, basically, they are the rec market for all of New England, because they'll get recs here and because they're they will sell more, for more in Connecticut or Massachusetts where they have to actually have recs to, to do things, they'll sell them there. And then we all benefit.
Oh, that's good, I'm not complaining about that.
So, Knollwood's really good about that, and they're kind of the standard in what basically everybody uses for all of New England, New York, and New Jersey.
Oh, wow, good company, then.
And I think they are in New Jersey.
The what?
I think they're based in New Jersey.
Oh.
So the, the one that I wanted to find in here to get the exact information was the notice, and we, we obviously can't do this, but Monday the tenth today was there, was the date for final, for setting the final twenty-twenty-three recs that would have happened first half of the year. And so, since solar log's not updating it, and he's not updating it, we can't get the check now for, like, our past rec stuff.
But will we get reimbursed at some point?
So, the, the comment was, you may lose those recs unfortunately officially, but if the window is missed, there are ways that he can make up those recs when he has all of the official numbers. So we will have to see what that happens, it'll be a slower process, but he doesn't think that we'll lose much, if any, revenue by the end of the process.
So even if we had the, um, solar company fix the SolarLog, uh, reporting, that would be the, that would be true with that as well, wouldn't it?
Sort of. Um, if the solar company came and did this quote and gave us the, sorry, here it is, uh, for the twelve fifty, and new SolarLog stuff went in, this is a little questionable, because the way they wrote it says, uh, SolarLog Solar Generation Meter and a five-year cell plan. So if they replace the meter, that means a new set of numbers, so it would start now and we would have lost everything. If they're replacing a modem on the existing meter, and all the numbers are the same, then the next time it reports, we just, it reports all of it, and so we get all of the recs going back, and the next time we would get a check. So doing it this way, we probably get the larger check in like August, or September, whenever the next quarter's worth are, because they do it, the recs accumulate quarterly.
By quarter.
And so, uh, there's a chance that by paying more, we might see more and more quickly. Um, but overall, it should end up about the same. If, if this is actually just an upgrade of the modems. If it's actually replacing the meters, then that guarantees we've lost all of the previous recs.
I think that quote said something about a meter.
Yes, that, that's why I'm pointing that out.
And we have two meters.
That's true. This only says one, not two, so maybe they're expecting they can do this twice, which would not be the case. But, um, so yes. I think I forward, did I forward you that response that I got from Paul?
I don't recall seeing it, Dave, so if you could.
So I will send that over to you, to make sure that you're able to do that. Okay. So that should now be off in your email.
Thank you.
And I believe that covers that topic. Which moves us then on to, unless anyone else has any further comments or questions. Town Hall Maintenance Tree Removal.
Tree removal.
Actually, is there anything from land use for departments? Okay, that moves us on to tree removal.
Can't you think of something?
Jesus Christ, what are you doing?
I'm working on the rebuild.
I looked in a, in a very, um, good local paper, and got the, uh, name of two tree companies that you have.
They're good. They're co, both good companies.
And one is Lee's Tree Service, and, and he's based in Salisbury. And he came, and he gave me an estimate for the cluster of three trees, um, that have out back. And at some point, we should look out the back door and you'll see what I'm talking about. And that estimate was fourteen hundred dollars.
In that estimate, what's he doing?
Well, here's the thing. This is, I, that's me typing it up, because I did not get anything written. Which I, which I would have liked, but I think if, if you decided to go with that one, I would ask him for written, something written.
Yeah, there should be some kind of contract between the two of you anyways.
Exactly. Um, so here is the one, the other one was ESG Tree Care, and, um, he has done work for the town before. He's done work up at the, I think, cemetery and park. Uh, for three, his estimate was twenty-four hundred dollars. And he added, if we wanted to have some of the limbs taken care of over here that are hanging down, that's another nine hundred. Um, and he mentioned, we would have to move the, um, barbecue pit that is out back, so he could get his equipment in, because they can't get to it from the other side with the gas tank. So those were the two, the two estimates.
And between the two, the thousand dollars in a sense. Did you get out of somebody, one person was doing a little bit more, or is this all being chipped up and removed, or what is the, what does this, what does this estimate include, per se? I see removal, I, I'm assuming they're taking him.
That's what I assumed, and maybe I, I shouldn't have assumed that, but, because that's what it meant.
And I guess I would just, I would just make sure that he, a lot of times, they might come in and cut it down, and then you take care of the mess. So we just want to make sure that.
I believe ESG made it clear to me, and I would check that with him, um, that they were taking the, the tree, the wood away.
Okay. And I'm, I'm sure this lead guy probably same idea, but you would just want to make sure that.
Right.
That it's apples for apples.
Wouldn't it be because they're going to get a, yeah, yeah.
So maybe just kind of, you want to hold off voting on that till we find out for sure?
Well, we, we can do a contingency, so he can move forward with things.
Because I will not, I will not, um, I'll be abstaining, because they both advertise with me, so.
My, my question, because I don't see a professional proposal quote in front of me, because you said you typed it.
Well, this one, I have one.
Well, ESG did, but, um, my question, and I'm sure in your, once we sign a contract for them to do it, would be included, is making sure that they're, um, properly insured. Insured. And or bonded.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
Especially, like, if it's a random tree, that's, that's one thing, that we should still do that for town, but it's, especially since it's hanging over the building.
Well, anytime somebody like that steps on, you'd want a certificate of insurance anyways. I have to always give them.
But especially to make sure that it's fully appropriate to protect the town.
Yeah, 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 well, that's why they list them and stuff, yep, their liability, hot.
So.
So I, I guess, I guess I would just say that, um, I'd make a motion to go with the, with the, the, the lesser number, but want to just make sure that in his contract, he's kind of lists what he's going to do for that fourteen hundred dollars. I mean, I don't know if we want to go back and just make, or have him tell us, and make sure that he tells us, so that it is, I just want to make sure it's apples for apples.
Well, I'd like to see it in writing.
Yeah. But even, even.
And I thought I'd have it by now, but since I don't.
You know, we just want to make sure that, you know, removal, removal of, you know, the brush, you know, down to like size.
The thing I was a little concerned about, and again, I've, I've not had trees cut down lately, but I thought fourteen hundred was low.
It does, it seems like a very, more than reasonable number, I agree with you.
I know.
But, but if that's what, just like the bridge, if that's what.
Oh, I, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm, I'm just.
I just, I guess you just want to make sure they're apples for apples.
Right, right.
And what our, what our goal is, is to have it removed and the mess cleaned up.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
So.
We actually have like nine trees out there that probably could go eventually, but that's, we'll plan for that.
I think that language would say what you want to.
Would, would you like me to read it?
Well, you said you were making the motion, so I'm allowing you to actually make that.
I made the motion, and thank God I got this guy sitting next to me. To move to accept the lowest bid from Lee's Tree Service contingent upon satisfactory insurance and full tree removal, full removal of the trees.
And I would second that. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Any further comments or discussion, or? All right, all in favor?
Aye. I abstain.
Okay. So that moves us on to.
Water rights.
The water rights letter.
Yes, the water rights letter. I don't know why I'm at sixes and sevens.
Which Dana has written up for us.
That's a cold report.
Dana, you can't see, because you went to the eyes. In response to Representative Ali Ward, and I assume that you have both read it. And if not, it is short, but this is in support of a bill being written to strike reference of Webster off of the existing legislation. And I believe we would need to sign that.
Yes, and as soon as I find that.
And it looks good.
Here we, here we are.
We'll sign away.
It's not where I thought it was, but that's it.
It's kind of like we can get up in the morning and, oh, we got one. I mean, as we all get older, you have to do stuff in order, or you forget. And then that's not good, yeah. You know, take those.
Are you learning now as you get older?
Yeah, come on, the swollen ankle, because I didn't take my blood pressure medicine.
And there is that.
Great, thank you.
And then the other one was the littering letter, uh, which was regarding the newspapers and the concrete monitor.
Dana, it's very nicely written.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. What do you think?
I probably, I, I actually wanted to re, I wanted to rewrite it and be a little more poignant, but, uh.
Dave. Well, sometimes killing people kindness.
So.
The second letter.
The second letter, right, yeah.
At least this one, uh, is requesting information from them, so if they've actually read the letter, we should get something back.
Yeah, you can also, like you said, be as mean as you want, if they don't read it, they don't read it.
I did receive an email today from the representative, um, and I think she's done really a lot of work for us. And she's, um, she's spoken with the.
Representative of, oh.
Uh, did you get the, this, uh, I, I mean, this is Representative Al, Al Ward.
Oh, okay.
That I'm talking about. She spoke with the lobbyist attorney from NHMA, who would likely weigh in at the matter at the public hearing, and she's also spoken with Representative Steve Shirtlap, who represents the city of Concord, who said, if it is just a matter of housekeeping, he didn't see any reason why he would oppose it. So I thought that was, that was interesting. She's anxious to get your response, so we have that, and she'll have that tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
And Steve Shirtlap's been around a long time, too. He's a really good guy, yeah, he's been around a long time.
It's just kind of neat that somebody stepped up and kind of helped us with it.
Well, he really has done a lot of work with it, and, uh, I think that.
That's the reason we get both of them in.
You know.
Representative Al Ward, a thank you letter.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
You know, I think, I think.
When this happens, when it's all okay, well, write a letter, good idea.
I'm sorry, it is now, but if I don't, I'll.
Oh, I'll take it. Don't worry, I'll take it.
Well, I don't get one anyway.
No.
No.
Mine just says this is not a check.
No. Oh, because it goes directly in?
Yeah.
Fucking cute little, you get a sports business.
They still give me the same amount of paper, it just says this is not a check.
Isn't that silly?
All right, uh, so that moves us on to new business, copier quotes.
I decided to go out for quotes on the copier, um, not that we need to do it tomorrow, but I'd rather kind of have an idea before the thing really dies. They're having trouble getting parts. He's been able to manage to have it work. This is Phil Tucker.
Oh, he's the greatest guy, yeah, he's terrific.
Where's he out of?
He is out of Tilt, Twin, Twin Rivers.
Twin River, Twin River, I've had him for years for me. He does great. Lives in Saul's great, too.
Yeah, no, that's all good. We just, we had our scanner go down this morning, and you don't real, well, you probably do, but I didn't realize how out of sorts you become.
Well, I don't want to have to listen to the assistant town administrator when he's trying to fat, uh, scan things.
Not just me, you get it from Wendy, too.
No, but it is, it is like, it's like almost like we took our arm.
That's what I'm telling Dana, the scanner is really important.
And the copying, I mean, it's, it's just amazing what, how much we use that machine, and the machine we've had, I mean, what a workforce.
It's a workhorse.
I mean, it's really, I mean, it'd be nice if you had another assessing company that would give you a machine, but, um, I don't think that's going to happen. Anyhow, um, I've gotten two quotes. And.
See, our copy people.
Twin Rivers, I, we had them redo it because it didn't quite match the other quote. And so, uh, that's why I've got an email here instead, although he hasn't gotten that from me yet. And they're both about, about the same. We've got a company called Budget Document Technology, and they seem to have a lot of services, and, and I would, again, I would certainly call and find out who their customers are and see how they've been happy with that.
So is the quote for all of the services, like long-term maintenance of the product?
No, that's a yearly deal.
Right, yeah.
You know, the, uh.
Because we just, our guy decided to just retire, and he was, it was Integrated Office Solutions, and he, he was awesome. You called, they were there like within a couple hours. So this morning, we had to Google somebody, we got somebody out of hooks at, which he was there within a couple hours, and my secretary had his switch, which he was cleaning it, but the things like yours, like it's, it's good, it's, it makes noises, and it's got a line, and.
So here's, the, the, the quote from him is ten thousand two ninety-three.
From who?
If we paid cash.
Who's ti, who's?
This is Budget, uh, Document Technology.
And where are they from?
I think they are in, they have offices in Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts, but I can't tell you right quickly.
And they want ten thousand what?
Ten thousand two ninety-three. Now, of course, they always have the feature you can lease or rent, which I didn't think we wanted to get involved with. Um, and then the other from a local vendor, um, is eleven thousand three forty-seven.
Who's that from, Twin Rivers?
That's from Twin River.
Now, how come you wouldn't want to lease him? I mean, we did it, we leased it, and, but everything kind of came with it. You leased it, the, the whole maintenance and everything.
Well. The, so typically, I guess, a.
I mean, granted, I should say, how much more does it cost to?
Well, that's.
Yeah, typically, the advantage of leasing is that you don't pay for it all at once.
Well, right.
The downside is you usually pay a hundred fifty to two hundred percent for the product over the lifespan that you're using it. If you're like we are, and we're using a really old piece of equipment, because we just kept the thing going for so long, then, like, we probably would have had to lease it four, five, six times at this point, so your percentages go up the longer you can maintain.
Budget document, if we leased it for two sixty-nine sixteen a month, it would cost us sixteen thousand dollars, one forty-nine at the end of the day.
And that leasing does not include any of those maintenances.
And that's a sixty-month lease.
Sixty-month, okay, so that's a five-year lease.
But that, but that, and that lease does not, it, it's a yearly thing for the maintenance.
The, that would be separate, yeah, the, the maintenance plan.
Well, I can say that I've had Twin Rivers doing my stuff for years, and they're, one of them, one of the guys lives right in Salisbury, right along the Webster line, almost. And they're great. They come out and they do it, and they, they're really reasonable, and matter of fact, they sold, they did sell me a new machine for a good price, too, when I got it, so.
So this is more along the lines of knowing what we should expect, so that when there's a failure, we have appropriate funding available in appropriate funds in order to handle it, and.
We have in the office supply equipment line, we have fifteen thousand nine oh four.
That's the, the, the fund.
That's a capital reserve fund.
And how much do we have in the technology fund?
Twelve thousand four sixty-nine.
Okay, so the reason I ask that is because both of them could be used for something like this. Technology, which we have not, I don't think we funded either of them yet this year, uh, and I, maybe we weren't funding the office one this year. I'd have to go look.
I can tell you in one moment.
But in any case, they haven't been funded this year. Uh, the technology one will be getting more funding. However, we are expecting that whether it's this year, next year, really soon now, we're going to be replacing the server in Town Hall. Because the more that they rely on it, and the more they do with it, and the larger our data sets get, and the more that the electronic documents and stuff happen to it, the more it will continue to show that it is an old, a very old, slow server. So, right now, the, it's manageable-ish, because it's one. So, right now, the, it's manageable-ish, because it's one person that he doesn't like about it.
It slowed me down, but it's fine.
But, uh, it's somewhat manageable-ish, because it's one person's workflow in a set area. If you were busier, or if it were everybody, that wouldn't be something that could be managed. And so, very soon, and again, whether it's this year, whether it's next year, but really soon, that server's gonna need to be replaced, and I don't remember when we got the quote, but we've gotten a few different quotes over a couple different years for replacing that server, and usually all told with, uh, with the labor and stuff to do the migration and so on, is, is usually somewhere in the fifteen to twenty K range for the, the whole project, so. We're, we basically have to say that all of the, uh, technology fund is probably already set aside for that server, unless, like, the copier goes and it's smaller than we had in there, but it, it wouldn't be more than we have available.
Yeah, we have, I mean, fortunately, we do have adequate for the copy machine. And we have twenty-five hundred more is, was voted to go in.
Okay, perfect. For each of them, or for only technology? How are we gonna keep our reports on us?
Um, let me see. Uh, twelve thousand for technology.
Okay, that makes sense, because that puts us around where that upper number would be, so we would be ready. Okay.
So I guess on, as far as the copy machine, what I'm thinking you're doing is we're just kind of holding, we have an idea of what we're gonna spend, and at some point, we're gonna have to pull the plug, and we'll let you know when that is. And again, I don't wanna, I hope it doesn't wait until, like, when it breaks and we have to wait for a while for it, you know, to come over on a slow, a slow boat from China or something.
Now, how did you decide, did they offer you different models?
Um, they, they had a few different models, but I wanted one that was just like the one we had. Just because that's what we used to.
How long has that been, I mean, how, how long, how old was the one that you originally had?
The one that we're using?
Yeah.
How old is it?
Yeah.
Um, I would say it's probably about eight or nine years old.
Because things change so fast and that.
Well, and again, yes, I mean, the newer one's a little faster, this one's, you know, somewhat slow. So if you came and needed a copy really quick, you'd have to wait for it to warm up.
Yeah, no, well, I have a pretty fast machine.
For ten thousand dollars, Dave, we can perk it up for you.
What do we use it mostly for?
Oh, you know, I use it a lot as just a printer, because it's cheaper than printing, you know?
Oh, so you print on your copier?
And it's in my office, so it's, it's convenient for me to grab.
So I would say, a lot of the use comes from scanning documents to send to people. Town clerk uses it a lot to scan stuff and copy stuff to send to the state. Wendy's using it all the time. I think we don't go more than half an hour without somebody using the copier every day.
Does it tell you how many copies a year?
Yes.
Yeah, how many copies a year is that?
I'd have to look.
Good, I was just curious, you know, just as we're talking about the price and the cost of it, so.
Yeah.
The second thing that, uh, you, especially when you're looking between different models, you want to keep in mind the cost per copy. Because that will vary a lot depending on what's the consumables, how, how large is this particular set of toner, or how many copies can this, uh, imaging portion do, et cetera, before you have to replace them.
That's a good point, and I'll, I'll find that out.
I would think, too, just, I know you like the similarity, but make sure that-
Oh, I'm not, I mean, I'm just saying, that's what, that's what I asked.
Yeah, but you know what I mean, I mean, it's-
Yeah, it's not that we're getting it, it's that this gives us a financial picture.
I mean, if, if we got another type of machine that really, basically, I'm just needing, we need something that does what we need it to do.
That's right, absolutely, yeah.
But you brought a good point about the cost per copy, and that's important, so.
Good old toner.
Now, see, I use ink for mine, so it comes in a little bag and it's very easy. I used to use toner, but I think ink is-
Yeah, the tone is expensive.
Right.
Very much.
Ink is a lot, and it's easier to, when it's not messy and all that, you know, so.
Yeah, it depends on the kind of printing you're doing, uh, but also how permanent things need to be, and how often you print. If, like, I have a, a laser printer at home, and expensive toner cartridges, but it's less expensive for, per copy, if I were to do a lot, but more important to me, because I don't do a lot, is they never go bad, whereas ink tanks will usually clog up or dry out or whatever.
Yeah, if you don't use it a lot, so I always use mine a lot, so.
I do know with the toner that it always is, needs to be replaced when I'm wearing a white shirt.
Yeah, that's a given, I believe that, and they really should have that down, it is not messy.
Thank you.
Oh, it's my turn.
Yes, it is.
Camper.
Oh, is that why you're here?
Yes, that was someone's abatement.
It's just a camper abatement.
Yep.
So, every year, you've heard this, take, this one's a little different. So, our campground's only open for a certain period of time, and if somebody needs to register their vehicle, they can't put the stickers on the plate. So when the assessors go out on April first, it doesn't have an updated sticker. However, they did register it before April first, so it was registered, and that's what this is, the camper was registered, so it wasn't, we're not supposed to tax it.
You're not supposed to tax it because it was registered already, you mean?
Because it was registered already.
Oh, okay, all right.
He's saying the assessors didn't see that because it wasn't-
Well, they weren't on there yet, so they wouldn't know, but it was still registered, yeah.
All right, so they, so this is basically, they paid twice for it, so we're giving them once, back again.
Right, and then you'll see another one for the same exact one in December, so we'll move that bill as well.
Okay.
Okay, uh, that moves us on to correspondence, or unless there's something else.
No.
Okay. And beyond the correspondence, we've already covered, do we have any?
We do have some correspondence. We've got, um, a notice from the state, Roy and Paula Fanjoy's, expiration date as health officer and deputy health officer, expiring at the end of this month. They would like to be reappointed, so in that vein, I've done the state paperwork, the board is amenable to that. If you would sign on the right-hand side of this page, so I can get them.
I assume there's no problem with that, though, I'll ask. Is there-
Oh, thank you.
Do we need any motion, or just the signatures?
They do a great job, so.
Yeah.
Glad to have them.
And we're very lucky to have two deputies, I mean, Matt Roble, his doesn't expire until November twenty-five, so. Make a note of that, Russ, because I may not be here then, but.
I need him out.
Oh, wait, did I screw that up?
I'll, I'll print your name, Dave, but-
That's what I was doing, because it said print name next to it, but I'm just looking at the top to make sure that, uh, officer, deputy, okay, no, that, that's fine.
But you have to sign, don't you?
I was just making sure I didn't put it in the wrong place.
No, we always leave it at the top.
Well, no, I meant, like, if this was supposed to be something for, like, them to fill out and sign, but.
You're doing this in correspondence, not signing documents?
Well, I just thought it would be a good time to do it. Russ, do you want to talk about this later?
Well, that's the letter that you asked me to draft for the code enforcement at the last meeting. It's the same letter we normally send, and I'm mailing that out tomorrow, or I hope you sign it today. And that's for the, the long stream.
Okay, so you haven't talked to him, right, this is the big-
Well, the letter goes out and then they either reach out to me.
Oh, okay. Well, you're the lucky one.
Well, I'm always, that's why I put Dana's number on it.
Sounds good to me. As we've said multiple times, I don't apply the same to everybody.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not that you can't have it, it's that you gotta do it the right way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did, we've gotten two correspondence from the Department of Environmental Services. The first is a copy of a letter that went to, uh, a gentleman who's got a project at Eight Deer Meadow Road, uh, that they have, he has resolved the issue they had with him down there, with the land resources management.
Is that the Horizon's one with culverts and stuff, or?
This one was found on Deer Meadow Road, Eight Deer Meadow Road.
I haven't heard of Eight Deer Meadow.
Yeah.
Which way is the numbering, is that?
Eight, oh, I don't know.
I think it's, I think it's backwards, I mean, I think it starts at, um, the Concord line.
Okay, then that's prob- that's probably that Horizon's Holdings one, which, basically, they clear-cut and put in culverts that they weren't approved to put in.
Okay, well, they've resolved that, and, and the letter went to their contractor, I think, because he's in Boston. And then we got, uh, the approval letter for our dredge and wetlands permit for Close Pin Bridge, so, um, we will be ripping the bridge out tomorrow. And, and that's all the correspondence.
Uh, just for clarification, we are sent, we do, or, or does DES send a copy of those also to our conservation commission?
I believe they do, let me just look and who-
Because if they don't, then we should make sure that they give a copy from us.
All right, we can do that.
I'm sure we can send it.
Well, according to, according to this, they get a copy.
Okay. I thought so, but I wanted to make sure, yeah.
Who's the, who's the people, again, that do the, are gonna do the bridge?
Uh, well, our engineer is VHB, our, our design engineer. We're gonna have to hire other engineers to oversee, oversee the construction part of it. And we don't know yet who's going to be doing the construction, because that will be going out.
That goes out to bid by, and VHB chooses the people, or do we choose it?
Well, them and you will choose it, you know, they'll, they'll recommend who they think you should-
They'll set up the bidding process and lists and all of that, you know, then tell us their recommendations and why.
All right.
Do we have any other correspondence, or I guess, documents to sign?
You have documents to sign. And you've got, I paid three bills to Pitney Bowes out of the bank account, because it takes so long, this is, I hope this is my last one that I have to do direct, because, we sent a check to them beginning of June, they still hadn't had it, so they were dunning us and, you know, late charges and all that stuff.
They didn't get it, how the heck, what did he go through?
I don't know.
Mars mail or something?
Well, it goes to some lockbox someplace, I mean, I think there's a lot of, so we had two bills for postage, and you might have thought I would have paid it together, but no, I didn't. And then we had, and then we had a bill for the lease of the machine itself.
Just the top cover rate?
Yes, yeah, if you wanted to look at the bill, it's attached.
How much do we actually save by leasing the machine and doing this, instead of just buying huge amounts of stamps?
You don't save anything, but what you do is, is a convenience, you know?
Oh, God, I wouldn't want to have to put individual stamps on all those.
We could find town volunteers to do that.
I, I was just thinking of, you know, how-
Just like we have town volunteers to help us put the reports together.
Russell loves to have that machine jam on him all the time.
Oh, my God, at least I'm not using Ben Jammin anymore.
Well, I, you know, we'd send Russ down to the post office for, you know, a couple hundred dollars worth of stamps.
Yeah. At least you wouldn't have to lick them.
That's true.
I like the old days.
You can always buy prepaid postage.
That's, yeah.
I think that's more expensive, though.
That's what the text collector does.
But it isn't, I mean, it's a convenience, and it doesn't, it's not a economy thing.
Well, I know that it, in theory, is supposed to actually cost us less for a lot of our stuff.
Well, we do get, I, I correct myself, in the fact, we do get a discount on the postage, so.
Oh, that's good.
I think postage is going up for sixty-six cents.
It's going up something, I saw it, three or four cents, yeah.
And we'll, and it was sixty-three, and we were paying sixty when it was sixty-three, I'm, I'm not sure.
Every penny counts.
So that's, yeah.
I thought it was fifty-seven right now.
No, I think it went up, Russ.
Yeah, it did, I just heard it.
They've raised their rates twice within the last-
The more mail we have, the better off it is.
All right, just keep telling me I'm wrong, it's fine, I just won't get a complex.
You know, I, I just, don't get a complex, but-
No, don't get a complex.
You know, you get used to it, Russ.
Okay.
And, and then finally, we have the, the two manifests, the payroll manifest, and the accounts payable manifest. And we're back on track, so you can do them here, and I won't be calling you to come in.
Aw.
But don't worry, we'll be back again.
It won't be off.
Don't do that, yeah, don't start that, Jesus, man, I had enough troubles trying to stay awake.
It's almost bedtime. One hour.
So what were, I see several invoices from Comptech, what were all of those invoices for?
I don't have them in front of me, Dave, but I can pull them.
Were they, like, calling?
Most of them are software, software subscriptions.
Oh, okay.
You know, we have the Duo, and we have, uh-
Yeah, I was gonna say, we haven't called them, or at least I haven't.
I do have two bills that I got from them downstairs that I didn't know what they were, so I have to call them tomorrow.
I'm glad you're right on that case, that's good.
I like to know what I'm doing.
And, and Corin May, Corin May, that's for culverts, where?
That's, that's for culverts, for, yeah. And that's coming out of trust funds. So now that I think that we don't have twenty-three thousand dollars in that fund, we have six thousand now.
Well, if that's culverts, we've got, uh, it should be coming out of bridge, culverts and bridges.
It is bridge and culvert, you're right.
Which we should have some money left over from White Plains.
There's a lot in there. And because we have a lot set up for Close Pin Bridge, which we're still paying for, but we, in here, you won't need as much. Home Depot credit services.
Yeah, that's for the new water cooler.
Wow. Boy, are you getting high on the hog here, new water cooler.
Yeah, the other, the other one bought the farm.
We tried to fix it, we spent a lot of time trying it.
I see that there's two invoices for Mitchy, are those for further things with White Plains?
Yes.
And what additional, like, was that just continuation of the engineering, or what additional is that for?
Basically, it was the last of the engineering bills.
Okay, so it was the last of the engineering bills.
But there's, there's two of them in there?
Yeah, two invoice numbers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because I did see that, too, but I thought this probably was for-
Is it in one check?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, because I was gonna say, I don't think.
Nice, Stables Credit Plan.
Do you, do you have, um, handy right here, anything for the VHB, a phone number for them?
Um, I cannot see anything.
Okay, you could be called tomorrow or something.
Okay, all right.
Because I want to call them, because, um, somebody said, they could, I should tell them, they could park all their stuff on my property right across the bridge, and they would save a lot of time and all that fun stuff, so.
I'll ask Greg to call you.
Okay, a lot of times, once somebody gets the bid, too, or probably a good place to start with them, to let them know, because that's a big thing, staging. Yeah, yeah, because it's right across the, you know, so, and they are gonna put a culvert, I know VHB, because I want, we have a ditch, a big ditch, and they were gonna put pipes in there, so we don't have that big culvert where it gets sick of the car.
And they might ask you if they can put their little construction-
That's what I, yeah, so I'm gonna call them and just see what they, it's easier for them.
Yep.
It's all flat.
And out of the way.
Yeah, it is right out of the way, so, and they could cut those pine trees down, but they could go where my old house was and just drive right in there all over the place. Because I have no more animals, so. Only deer and stuff, they often, bears, but they'll have to go move out.
Make sure you negotiate what you want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't have them, make sure you-
Because otherwise, they'll, they'll drive everywhere.
Yeah. Go ahead, but make sure you replant, or whatever, needs to be left better than it is.
Do we have anything further to sign?
No.
Okay, well, we kind of skipped things, but we have no public to comment, so do we have motions to make?
Uh, you don't.
Perfect.
You do have minutes to approve.
Do, is there a reason for weaving that on all the time? I know we used to do it all the time, but now that we're quarterly.
You know, there isn't, probably I should just take them out, because since we don't do the trust funds the way we used to.
Yeah, we should probably only put it on there quarterly now.
Okay.
And that leaves us with the minutes, which we are basically good, there was, uh, where was I? My editor, he only found one mistake, pa, page one, line forty-one, Coordinator Tatcher responded that he had looked the search for the company. You know, it looks so good when you're reading it, so, and I read it.
Should never prove your own writing.
That's why I have Dana read it too, right after.
Obviously, I didn't, you, you should never ask me to prove anything.
All the years I've been writing my newspaper, I had, and I proofread my own, very few problems, quite a problem, so.
Has everybody else had a chance to look through the minutes?
Yeah, but we didn't catch that, Dave, no.
So, so I would move to approve the direct meeting minutes with the corrections for typos.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna have to do a lot of that tonight.
All right. Oh, that was just copies, what was it? I'm gonna close it. All right, so that covers everything on our agenda, is there any other business that the board wish, or staff wish we should talk about?
I have nothing further, and I don't need a non-public.
Good.
All right, I would move that we close this meeting at eight oh three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Look at that, boy.
Dave, I, you have, your kids and everything are here, right, so.
They've got their own stuff, so.
You're not going home with you?
Dana's running to turn it off.
Gee, you'll get them both.
I might.
Right, well, yeah, because otherwise, if you didn't, they might have had their weight.
Well, you could change it up.